This conference will now be recorded.
Just so everybody's aware, when we go through this, when we get to the resolution of transferring the Appleton Ambulance Service to the hospital, that is where we'll open up for a vote. And when we go to discussion, that's when people can get involved in your questions and stuff like that. So it's not like we're running it through ahead of where it shows on agenda.
And please move up the microphone.
If you have questions, because people that are virtual can't hear it if you're not up by the mic.
Does that include people in the hall when they come in at that point?
Yeah, if they have questions, they come up. I mean, we just need to, because we've had a lot of complaints, you know, people speak back. People on virtual can't hear.
I just did an office today.
This is Amber. Can you guys talk into your microphones a little closer? Because I'm virtual right now, and I didn't hear hardly anything of what you said, Dan.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better. So what did you say about the hospital ambulance situation?
When we open that up for discussion, when we open it up for a vote, and then we go to the second, and then when we ask for discussion, that's when the people from the hospital and the ambulance can ask their questions.
So there will be a vote prior to discussion, is that what you said?
Yeah, it won't be a vote prior to discussion. That's the legal way we have to do it, to bring it to discussion so everybody can ask their questions.
Amber, there'll be a motion in a second, and then we can open up for discussion.
I might have to call in because I am really having a hard time hearing you guys.
How about now?
That's better.
I'll try to do that.
All right, to be honest, I'll call the board now, all right? Because we have, we're in here, sit down. We have a motion to approve the minutes from, our motion to approve the minutes from June 17th, 2020, regular meeting of the city council.
Thanks, Dan.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes from the June 17th, 2020 regular meeting. May I have any discussion?
The only thing is, is under the payment of invoices, Andrew's last name is misspelled, that's all.
Thanks, Amber.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Here it comes, Arnold Vander.
Aye.
All right, opposed?
Aye.
Motion, curious. There's a little delay on the votes. To be on to transfer ambulance to the Appleton Area Health.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2020-23, transferring the administration of the Appleton Ambulance Service over to Appleton Area Health effective January 1st, 2020.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. It feels like this motion to move the ambulance into the hospital has been rushed. Is there a reason that it's in such a hurry?
Well, I know the topic's been around for about 15 years off now. And I guess the latest go around was approximately about a year ago.
It was sort of two, I think, that's where it's at.
It was about a year ago because it was when the hospital was wanting to pay off their debt by taking the ambulance under them. But now that that is being paid off, then it was about a year ago now, so. Also, at that time, it was said that the city was going to continue to maintain the building and the rates. Is that still on the table?
I didn't look back on myself, because Lori mentioned that at the hospital meeting. I didn't find anything, but I looked back in the meetings that I had with him. Not stadium, so some other time or prior.
I don't remember that either, but when you say maintenance, what do you mean by maintenance?
Well, like replacing the rates and keeping up with the maintenance of the building, capital costs.
That I do not remember from the conversation, so could be wrong, I have to look back and look at the table.
It also feels like it's been rushed because one week before, the ambulance was asked to lose or make a vote on if they wanted to stay in the city or go to the hospital. I was told by another ambulance member, the council member said that the ambulance will be forced under the hospital by the first of the year. That doesn't feel very good to hear that from somebody else in the community.
There's two lines of hearsay in that statement, if you want to say directly. Are there any questions that we've been told prior to you or have any knowledge of?
Is the ambulance budget being targeted versus other things that are letting, that the city letting money for the pool? Or the parks, or the dog park, any other areas in town that they're letting money towards?
I think we'll be looking at all aspects in the future.
You what?
I think we'll be looking at all aspects of our city in the future.
So why is it starting with the ambulance, I'm just curious?
The amount of money that we're bound to doing for the ambulance right now, if we can move that out there and take that off of what we need to buy for, it'll save us 22% of what our taxes are in this town. That's a very huge number. And also, this is transferring some numbers now. Is that correct? I mean, that's what I read in the mission. All this stuff was put online. I mean, you guys were all, I mean, everything that you researched on it was actually put on our website. And I think it goes right through all percentages and we're all safe.
Is that the letter that was put out yesterday?
I'm not sure, but I've been working through a while.
It also says that that would happen January 1st of 2020, so is this getting back to this then?
Would assume that's the table.
Yeah, I was.
And that's the basis.
I was just gonna come, this is Councilmember Molden. Can I speak for a moment, or should I wait?
Oh, go ahead.
So I was gonna make note of that too on the, on the motion. It does say January 1st of 2020, but I guess I have been making some phone calls and talking to some people. You know, at this time, I guess, I know that this has been in discussion for the last, I don't know, year, 18 months. I couldn't hear what was said exactly, but I don't, I don't feel like we're going to vote on this subject matter. I just feel like there are too many unanswered questions, not only, you know, to the ambulance members, but you know, if it involves the hospital, if there's questions there, and even myself. I mean, I am completely in favor of, you know, the end goal in sight to reduce the taxpayers' taxes. But I also feel like it is our obligation to those tax members, taxpayers. We want to make sure that we're all informed and informed of the plan and the action. I would like to see or ask the council to schedule a joint meeting with the council, the ambulance service, and the hospital. I know there were concerns because questions weren't presented, but you know, even just in the last two days, there's been, it seems like a lot of heated conversations. And I guess I don't like that. We have discussed this plan months ago, and I don't think that Appleton Area Health is opposed to the move. However, I do think that being in the middle of this pandemic does, does change things. And I don't want them to feel forced into something for a vote tonight that they can't handle, even if it is January 1st. I mean, as far as the ambulance members, this is a volunteer service. And you know, they donate their time, their weekends, their nights, their holidays. You know, and I think for the most part, I can't speak for all of them, but this is not about money, making money as a volunteer. It's like, they're serving our community, you know, in, in time of emergency. And I don't want people to be upset and be leaving and have to resource to mutual aid and then have to wait 40 to 50 minutes, you know, for an ambulance. So I just feel like there's too much distinction regarding this right now. And I would request to have a special meeting. I don't want to drag my feet either, we have talked about this. I just feel like we should have a joint meeting and make a decision in the next month or two.
I would agree. I don't feel like any of the ambulance members are opposed per se to go under the hospital. But to be asked to do the vote without having any questions, any discussions, and knowing well that no discussion is happening with the hospital, didn't feel very well, like it feels a little bit hostile. There are several members that are ready to pretty much go on and talk. And then what does the city do? What does the, what does this community do? Does anybody ever utilize the ambulance? Wouldn't you want to wait 50 minutes if you were in a car accident? I wouldn't, working with a heart attack or a stroke, or your child got hit by a car. It's an important service to have. And to not even be talked to, just told, you need to make this vote without having any questions, feels really disrespectful.
Well, as I opened that up in the meeting, but just so you're aware, the questions you have, we need to have given to the city office because the questions you have, we cannot answer as a council with all our help of the city office.
But as the ambulance, we're not asking questions for immediate answers. We're asking questions so that there could be discussion. Because I've come to these meetings and there is no discussion. There's something on the agenda, it's motioned and it's approved, and there's no discussion. Nobody in the city knows anything about what's happening. It's probably been discussed between you guys, but how does that notify the public of what's happening?
As a council member, if I have any questions or issues, I don't have to discuss it if I'm okay with the motion. There's nothing being hidden by not discussing anything that I have any questions or issues.
But there was nothing being hidden by us not submitting your questions at the time. We had questions that we wanted to ask to the council as a whole about the entire service.
Of course, my concern is that the reason we need to move forward with this is if we do it by January 1st, it doesn't have to be eternal, but it just means that you have to take it over. But if we can just get harder with it, that takes us, otherwise we lose that 22% for another year. You know, 22% is a big number. It's like a hundred and some thousand dollars we're just sorting off the grid and just by doing some year for sure. I mean, that's tight, and so we keep pushing this down, it's costing thousands and thousands of dollars.
And then there's some information available to, excuse me, available to our public. Everything that we have in front of us right now is available to the public before the meetings and after the meetings.
Right, but what was presented to the ambulance before we were asked to vote if you wanted to?
I'm just going back to your original question, and that is, it seems like things are pre- determined before they get here. There's never been more transparency in the law. Also, when I was speaking with April, I wasn't under the impression that I was speaking to your representative.
That what?
I was speaking to your representative on the ambulance. So I was speaking with April, and that person represents the body. And how much more, I don't know how much more to do.
Well, she provided the information, all of this about the tax stuff to, because I was not aware of any of this tax stuff, that it was going to be a 20% decrease. Was that all given prior to that meeting, was that?
She didn't answer that. What we discussed was letting us know what her preference would be. And then that was put to you guys. And also, I, you know, I am regretful that it feels like it's something that was pushed on. Because it wasn't, it was a request to know what the ambulance wanted. That's it.
And I don't have a problem, I mean, if you want to hold off, and that joint meeting is finally, but everybody needs to understand whether it's the hospital case department, the big department, when you're employed and you're working for the citizens of Appleton. And if we can save a bunch of money on your taxes, that is a big deal. Because I know, I've been here my whole life, and I've talked to friends who live everywhere, and I pay more taxes than anybody I know. And we have the infrastructure that's shot. How are we going to raise the rate of moving and tax our people more? I mean, we can't, we gotta fix thorough streets, everything, and that's going to raise our taxes more yet. And we're already at 800 and some cities in the state of Minnesota, our taxes are 14% taxed, and our taxes are strong. So that's the dilemma we're facing as a city council.
I mean, just having a look at, having a look at prior budget talks, it was just something that was, what do we do? Last year, this is the first time our each day we look at line item by line item. And I agree, our taxes are unbelievable. And we aren't doing our job, but we're trying to not help our taxpayers help their own. So to me, this is very important as well.
I agree, it is important to help the taxpayers, but it's also important to maintain that relationship and to keep an ambulance service in this town. We are an aging community. That is a factor. And especially during the pandemic.
I'd like to touch upon something that you said, whether the ambulance budget is being targeted.
I asked, that was the 20.
Yeah, so just to clarify, we're in the middle of the budget process, and all the budgets are being evaluated. I'm not sure that it's fair to use the word targeted, because what we're doing is reviewing which aspects of the budget must necessarily remain on the tax levy and which not need to remain on the tax levy. And just so that you know, not only the ambulance is being considered for not being on the tax levy. Some of the issues that we're dealing with with regard to the tax levy and how high our tax rate are, are she able to, a couple of ideas here or there that have been necessarily put on the tax levy that's contributed to where we are now. The ambulance is just upon review, the one thing that you can really do to significantly improve the tax burden upon a significant. Excuse me?
Did you say it was upon review?
Yes.
It feels differently coming from the ambulance perspective. It doesn't feel like it's upon review. It feels like it is a forest issue that is going to be settled up.
April and I along with the city clerk met and reviewed the ambulance budget. We have been reviewing their budget independently from a capital perspective, from an operational perspective, and finally, from equity perspective, which is the tax rate. I know that is difficult, but to use words like targeted, it's, it's a little heavy. I was looking at math.
I wasn't accusing you of targeting the ambulance, because I was asking you if it was being targeted.
What would give you an indication that it looks like a target?
If what?
What would do an indication that makes you feel like it's a target?
Well, in your email, you said that we refused to do something by our own detriment, that was.
The word detriment means.
From a sovereign perspective, what would it be?
Detriment means you didn't bring it to my office, which is what the structure of the government is, so I can't present it to the city council.
But you know, are we required to raise, put all of our questions through, or are we not allowed to ask the city council?
You can, if you want a significant response, you might want to bring it to my office.
We weren't asking for a significant response. Like I said before, we wanted to ask the questions.
So you don't want a significant response?
What?
You don't want a significant response?
We weren't asking for responses to every single question. We don't expect anybody to have all of the answers.
So what do we want?
We want to be able to ask the questions.
So that's where you want to have this special meeting, and we'll say, all right, then I can turn off.
Correct.
So it seems like these questions are about transition. The transition is something that would happen after you vote anyway, because there are a number of things that Lori and I and Jaden and the board and all of us can do, but that doesn't need to stop the vote. These are things that would happen anyway. Because this vote, we don't attach to this vote all to how we can transfer it over, pay it from, repay it. Which by the way, it's a function of the county serving Kirkville and Benson and Appleton already. So we wouldn't need to ask for that, that's already happening. There's no.
This is Councilor Molden. I have, does the hospital have a specific plan if the vote were to go through on payment insurance, PRA such as that?
Hello, Lori Andre, CEO of Appleton Area Health. First of all, I do want to say, before I answer that, Amber, you know, we certainly do support and recognize that there are big challenges in the city and taxes and that sort of thing. So certainly isn't our intention to add or create more issues around that, so just fine to say that. But Amber, as far as a plan, we know some of the things we're going to have to do. Do we know a lot that's going to take with peers and those sort of things specifically all figured out? And staffing is an issue with the ambulance. There's a potential for a bigger issue with staffing with the ambulance. Big enough for some of the, the feelings of some of the ambulance members, from my understanding. So you know, certainly there's that potential for that, creating people staffed up. I know somebody had said to me that, well, you know, your nurses complete transfers, but we have two nurses scheduled every day. So you can't just pull nurses to go run down the road for a tour or whatever in an ambulance either. So there's some of those things that are challenges that we're not opposed to trying to work through. I know today I did send Willie an email and the Amazon or the hospital board to let Willie and the board know that I, like all of us from our board meeting yesterday, and our wish or our request of the council would be, you know, first and foremost, we would like to just pause for a little bit. And we know that this fall and this winter is going to be the potential for COVID to really blow up and be kind of a real big issue for us out here in rural is probably the most likely to happen. So to be bringing, you know, if that does happen, and you know, you have to plan, and our, we have to plan for that worst case, we don't have a choice. But to be bringing the ambulance onboard and being prepared for that all during the middle of a potential real uptick. And you know, for us, our care centers are in our assisted living area, places we're really fearful about because we know they're our most vulnerable population, as well as the elderly in our community as well. So for us to put all of our energy and our resources in and making sure we're managing most things and taking care of that is certainly a high priority for us. And to be working and bringing on a whole new service new, all during that time with a potential of January 1st, is very, it would be very difficult for us to do that well, is what I'm saying. I don't know if you guys got the email that I sent to Willie today? Yeah. And basically, what we are requesting to put a pause on it first. I do think there's a lot of hurt feelings and a lot of work we could do to collaborate better together and all be on the same page. I mean, at the end of the day, every single person is concerned about the community and for different reasons, for tax reasons, but also for the health of people. And I know you guys care about people's health as well. So first thought was a pause, but if you do choose to make this vote and move forward with this, we would really, really encourage you to go with that October 1st, 2021 date to start, or we take it over. It'll give us time to get over this potential crucial time with COVID. I mean, we're seeing what's happening nationally. One of the CBC has said if, that this fall and winter could be the biggest public health crisis this country has ever faced. And I think we can't either ignore that, and timing is everything. I mean, you try to rush something through, like I said in my email, if we put, strain our resources so that they can't do a good job, we are going to fail or not do a very good job. And then the patients and the people in the community will pay for that. So we feel very strongly about that. The majority of the board feels strongly about that. I just, I just would really encourage you to think about that, if you haven't come to look at that. And then the other thing is, is, you know, we have that difficulty financially, you know, in the past, and we certainly have come a long way. We have gotten funding from the government, but we all know that there's a very good potential that the government may ask for that money if we come through this in a better way than we thought we would. So that money is not guaranteed for us. We are, we are living on our own, these cash on hand, watching that, making sure we protect that. So I just think that we have to consider those things. It is going to be, what we've looked at, and I don't know if Jake wants to speak to that, but we've looked at it, we did a really thorough analysis, and that looks like a $30,000 a year loss for us, no matter what. Yes, the pony does provide some dollars, but it looked like the city in the past has also added dollars to that for ambulance rates and accept things like that. So the other thing is, we would ask the city to be willing to levy $40,000 per year for three years. And we could look at that beyond like that, if we really just somehow, we really make it sustainable and really do a good job with it, and it goes very well, we could revisit that. And certainly it isn't our goal to, you know, just want to be given things. But we also are working a business, and for me as the CEO on our hospital board as well, who intentionally think, yeah, we're going to, you know, do this $30,000 a year, and that's okay. You know, that isn't exactly a good thing either. So we're asking for compromises. I think that for us to do this very well, it would definitely be an October 2021 date would be the best for the whole. I know I talked to Willie, you may have misunderstood you on Monday, but I thought that when you and I, because I knew had thought that that October 2021 date wouldn't factor into some of these things that Dan was talking about, about taxes.
I feel what you are mentioning, and I'd like to do that. The issue is that the certification of our tax levy is a temporal effect. So once something is on a tax levy, it impacts the tax levy. So if we're trying to save on the tax levy for 2021, waiting until October 2021 still impacts the taxpayers.
And I understand that, Amber, when I said that.
Do you? Because the thing is, I'm new here, still learning all of you, you guys. And I know I've had some ups and downs for some of you, but something that I learned from you that I really appreciate is how sensitive everybody is to what people are really going through here in the city. Poverty in this Appleton, Minnesota is ridiculously high. But there are people that have to decide between buying bread and paying their utilities. We have to, we have to balance it somewhere. And everything that she has said is something that I share. Me and Lori are not in disagreement, we're in disagreement about when to do it. It's not that we don't see each other, we do, it's just about when. My perspective is that we can work together for how we do it, but it should be off of the tax levy. I agree, we should have them bring into city council for capital items for support. What the county gives over is not enough, we cannot fool ourselves. They are going to need some help because we need their help. So if they bring it to city council, this is, this is the body that does it, not moving away. So we are in agreement about that. It's just that the temporal effect of a certification of tax levy slows things down in terms of the savings we're trying to bring to our taxpayers, which includes me not here too.
Yeah, and I understand that, but also to do this successfully, with the ambulance coming under the hospital, I would rather do it late when it happens and have it be for now until 100 years from now. And with a rate that way than trying to run something wrong really quickly and fast. And we don't have the resources, we're in the middle of a severe pandemic, and our resources are as great as possible, and we can't do it well. I mean, I think sometimes taking a little time to do things right is worth it, rather than rushing into things. That's my opinion, and I.
It is a, it's a tough one. Some people on the city council have the ambulance in the hospital, but to, I mean, if there's any way to break this off of the tax, like we're doing it, but I mean, say it takes 18 months or two years to totally transition over to the hospital. I mean, have it run like it is, correct? If we just get it off of our tax levy, and there's just a portion of it that would have to run through you for us to save that money, but just gradually transition it over.
Also, what you're really saying, what you're saying is an apple, and the tax levy is an orange.
Also, what you're really saying, what you're saying is an apple and the tax levy is an orange. The tax levy is a real certification of a temporal effect of people vote through you guys for this tax levy. If after that period, you want to give it to someone else to do it, it still has impacted because that snapshot of time has happened.
But my, my thing is if we can, if we can just do the paperwork to get it transferred to you, however we have to do it, if we can save $150,000 on our taxpayers and, and just take 18 months or two years and just gradually transport it over. And we don't want to throw it in the burden. That's not the intention, but there's gotta be a way working with everybody that you can gradually do it, but we can save that on January 1. And if we save that money, that whole weirdness, you know what I'm saying?
What about this? Because Jake's presentation identified the same loss that I identify with you from cycle to cycle to cycle. What is the city council, what to consider? We're transferring it over. They don't want to start with a net loss. Couldn't we just transfer $30,000 to start it off so they don't start off with a loss?
This is Counselor Molden. I still feel like there should be some sort of joint session just to clear the air on all the questions and uncertainties that people have been expressing in the last 48 to 72 hours. I think there are several people that haven't that common goal that they, they would love to see the tax reduction. I mean, it's an awesome thing, but I strongly feel that having some conversation as a group would be extremely beneficial. And like I said, I don't want to drag my feet either, but having a meeting and making a decision even a month, I don't think is harmful.
How, just your question, how does the ambulance operate at all? I mean, who runs it? I mean, I don't get it. How does it operate?
That's why we have a kind of a social problem. The ambulance is
Excuse me? Can I, can I? Hello?
I have some others coming.
My name is Nicholas Moos. I'm an ambulance member. I want to point out something that happened this morning as a result of all of the there was an individual who was serving very, very well as the ambulance administrator, being that go-to from the city council to the ambulance. That has stepped downward because we do not have any leadership at this time. The other thing that I want to say is one thing that I was raised to understand was I don't sign anything or agree to anything unless it's in writing. What you are about to do by voting on the resolution is in writing saying everything being transferred over. What difficulty would it hold? Hold off for a month? Discuss everything and then when you vote on it in a month, it is literally everything that needs to be in writing. So everyone is protected. What is the difficulty? What, what is, what, what harm would it do to hold off on a month? Sign something into the city books that would protect and serve.
We are going to move forward with this. It's not something we're going to table and then take it down and roll it. We're going to have a meeting, discuss, get everything out and get it done. I mean, some of these, we need to save the money, so.
So you're, but you're going to save the money if you vote on it in a month because the tax levy isn't due until December 28, 20?
Yes, I'm fine with it. The council votes to move it, that's fine with me. That's, everybody's good with that.
I'd rather vote tonight. I, I feel like we can do the vote tonight. We can work out these details over the next months.
So you're willing to vote on something that says in writing one thing, but then try and change it later on? That seems counterintuitive.
That's not what I said.
So what, what are you, what would you be voting on tonight?
We're voting on saving the citizens 22% tax rate.
So, but what harm would that be in, in waiting a month to do that? Calling us missiles and sending players and then voting on it in August of 2020? That does not affect the tax levy for 2021?
We have to approve our tax levy when September, September.
So technically you have two months then. Why, why rush it tight and then try and change something retroactively? That doesn't sound prudent on the city council's part.
This is just the first step tonight. This is the first step.
The voting in September though, for the budget is preliminary in September. The final is in December.
Right, but it still has to be submitted in September.
Again, that's two months down the road. Why are we trying to force something and risk losing ambulance numbers tonight? And unable to provide coverage for the ambulance services in Appleton from tonight on by voting on something that doesn't need to be voted on tonight? I would love to try to explain to the citizens, to the residents of Appleton, why they have to call Benson or Dawson or Madison this weekend in the middle of the summer to come to the Appleton pool when their kid has drowned.
That's about the third time that the council's been threatened. I have to agree. And I don't think that has any place here. That's the second or third person that said, if we vote on this tonight, then several people will be quitting. We could move their ambulance service tonight. That is definitely a threat. So I appreciated that stop. Lori, your question?
Yeah, so I mean, you had mentioned that, you know, potentially bringing it over and then gradually moving it over. And I think that, I know Jake did a nice job of pointing that out when it gets recently, you know, there's the payers and there's all of the billing and the, you know, the recruitment and the onboarding of people and all of those different areas. The training up of our nursing staff to try to get them trained to be able to take the transfer so that we can try to get that into a more positive number or even a break even. And we know that, you know, that's probably the goal we would shoot for is that break even. But again, I'm just, for me, I think, you know, we're, we're all care about the community and we all want the community to be safe and taken care of. And we also want, you know, people to be able to afford the things that they need. But I really believe that if we want to do this right, that timeline during this pandemic is good. It's not, it's not going to, it's going to be very difficult to make that global wellness move. And I know, Andrew, when you just spoke about people, you know, threatening to quit or whatever, but for us, that would be for us with the idea of taking that on, that would be a real fear because I think the ambulance already runs on, you know, they've got, I think, nine active. So, you know, two or three less people puts that ambulance service into crisis. So that's, that for us, if, if we're in charge and taking it over in an area where we're adopting or it's coming toward us from a HR standpoint and recruitment and that sort of thing, it's that's serious and very scary. And then the point there would be if something like that scenario happened and what, what happens if we can't recruit? On that one step, that's, yeah, you know, those are the things that certainly I understand what you're saying, but it's also something possibility that I think if we really work together, I think there's a lot of hurt feelings.
What makes you say that they're not being respected is you're moving respect.
I think they're feeling
You're talking about feelings. You can't quantify that.
Well, I'm not going to get into that, Willie. I'm just trying to bring us together so that we can all work together and then tap this.
So, 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 so. First of all, I understand that nothing is saying that the fall and winter and the spring will be moving. In some cases here, it's still terrible. October is going to be I don't know if there will be a good time in the next two years, three years.
We should have a vaccine. I didn't change that. It's going to blow up. But that expert is pretty confident that by that time there should be. So that for me, the other thing I think that can happen to you guys, that Lori, you just made the decision on this. The big announcement, you guys better just have it ready and it's on us then if we're not ready. But at least we've been given a proper amount of time and we've got a successful thing. I mean, that's the way be successful. We sure don't. So that's, that's what I'm asking is just have that consideration on that. And maybe that is, maybe if we do all get together and have a conversation, maybe there's things we can look at in ways that the ambulance would help us that we could make things more quicker. I don't know. Until we have those conversations with each other, I don't know what we're going to have. Very smart and intelligent people in all of these areas that could bring something to the people. Idea of what it's going to take to make this successful.
It's a beautiful, it's 2022 for taxpayers. That completely eliminates 100 and whatever, 50, $60,000 until 2022.
Right. But I think that also from the perspective, if the ambulance, for example, we just can't fix it. And things don't go well or there is a bunch of turnover, whatever the case might be. And then all of a sudden we're
How long can the animal, it's not the way it's being run right now. There's no, you know, I mean, I don't know about operates. That's what I'm asking. I mean, they can run for 10 years. The way it's running now.
With more, with more people. That's our, that's our, that's our herd.
Insurance, like, you know, where's that coming from? Who's doing that now?
That all gets submitted to the city from our timesheets and billings.
You guys do all of that?
And then it's all, and we get paid through the city, you know, for that, for call and transfer.
So how long is that? If we do it January 11, we transition, they do it right and all the way they are, just save that money. And that's all the way back. We come out of the hospital and all the submissions are, I think, they're not bringing them home.
Why not? There's the, the billing is almost sort of serves different things, but if we're us.
So that's all, somebody else will lose yours.
Like, we're absolutely
Okay, so we have to stay about 100 and Hill. The other thing with the timeline is payers, insurance, I mean, it's Medicare, Medicaid commercials. We would have to, you know, change everything over, not even change over, get all new boater rates with our payers. Medicare patient got one, our billings, so to us, we won't be able to give for that. So that's a big issue over the course of a month. The February March, it's a lot of taxes available. It is possible, but I mean, I don't, I don't know. I've talked to payers. They say, take your time. You don't mess your head or anything together. But yeah, that is a risk. Not saying it's a probable risk, not because I, I said we could do it and it may be, you know, December 31st. Medicare says you're good. It may say February 1st, you're good. And you're back, you're good to go. But if we have any runs of any hands, we have to bill Medicare. There could be an issue. But that is a risk that we're on for revenue laws.
So to, to get it out of the tax part of what we're doing, all that would have to be there is completely to get that tax rate?
For, we need to be off of our tax levy completely.
So you're going to do the paperwork here then?
No, all that has to be
All the expenses would be
Paid directly.
All expenses revenue would be our responsibility.
Any thoughts? I mean, I, I personally know what the questions we've asked here. I would like to know more about how things need to be, but I don't know. It's up to, you know, it's up to you as a city council, so I just, I don't.
Dan, can you talk into the mic a little bit more?
I can't.
Talking to the mic more.
Talking to the mic more. That was Amber.
We'll start to your face. Does anybody have any one question, Mr. Ferman?
Lauren Rowe, Hospital Board Chair. Do we need a little education here, yes? Dan, you mentioned 22%. Explain to me what your, what that 22% is.
Tax rate right now for Appleton is 205%. And my understanding of that number is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but basically the, the league of Minnesota cities looks at the average income in Appleton and they look at the average household in Appleton and what it's worth. And then they say this is what the average person in Appleton had paid. That would be 100%. Okay. And, you know, our, our surrounding towns, Madison, Dawson, Jamby, they're, they're between 116, 148, somewhere in that range. You know, so actually everybody's a little bit above 100%, but we're at 200 or whatever, 205%. So when he's saying a 21.7% decrease, it's bringing us down to somewhat in the ballpark at 183%. So it's what the average Appleton person on the average income for.
I just, 22% is kind of messing me up here. That is based on what? A $160,000 budget?
What, what are you asking?
I'm asking how we're right that we're talking 22%, which is a huge number.
So our tax, our, our tax level is to respond? Would you want me to respond?
Sure.
Okay. So the net, the net tax capacity in Minnesota is what we commonly call your tax rate. It's composed of your total tax capacity minus home and post that exclusions that gets you towards your taxable tax capacity. I'm not making this self-disagreeing way.
Oh, yeah, I understand that part of it. I just wondered.
That.
Ambulance could be.
That. So if you're asking a question, you have to let me answer. The levy that you levy gets divided by the total tax, the taxable tax capacity. And then that's how you arrive at the figure that you're asking the question about. The ambulance costs are a portion of the levy that we're raising, right? So when you reduce that a lot, then you have less of levy to be divided by taxable tax capacity, which will give you a different lower tax rate. So that's where we get that, that difference.
My question is, you're basing that 22% on what figure do the ambulance cost?
It's also not, it's not 22%, it's 22 percentage points. So it's dropping from 250 to 183. So a percentage would be like 10% or something like that.
You're still not getting, you're not getting my point or not getting answered.
I'm not getting your question.
On what are we budgeting for the ambulance? $160,000?
Last year was $158,900.
So $159,000 for easy income? When, in any of the experiences I have, have had per levy, and I have had some, when we set up a budget, we project our expenses for each specific category, 159,000 for the ambulance. And then we project our income for the year, which
$120,000.
$120,000, okay, well, at one point was, of the assumption that the ambulance had lost a net of $10,000 last year. Say 120. So that leaves $39,000. So $39,000 is what you are actually levying.
No, no, sir. You're levying the entire, as we would say, shebang, the entire 158,900. That's what you're asking taxpayers for. This is the part that's so, it's heartbreaking because even if the ambulance were making hand over fist money, being very good positioned, once they're on the tax rate, they've already affected the tax rate. Even if the ambulance were making hand over fist money, being very good positioned, once they're on the tax rate, they've already affected the tax rate. Even if they're making all these revenues and the way that it would save the taxpayers in the next fiscal season Is by requesting less on the levy because you had enough revenues consuming here.
So you're not, you're not budgeting 160, you're levying 160,000.
Our levy is composed of the budget, sir.
That's different way for people, that, not saying that's wrong, that just
That's how levy is composed.
Different nothing for city budgeting than there is for some other government.
True words have never been said.
Anyway, I appreciate, Dan, you mentioned, you have answered questions that you haven't yet answered before. I do, and I fully support, of all you, Jake presented. We're not, as a hospital, we're not opposed to the ambulance coming under our weight. In all honesty, I feel that's probably a wrong thing. But tiny is gonna be an issue. I guess from the hospital board perspective, I have to oppose this Because of the fact that we are trying to make money, we're out there trying to operate in black. The city is trying to move the ambulance out of this budget because of the fact that it's losing money.
No, that's not why, because of the burden to taxpayers.
It is, it is part of the rationale of your, your table.
Not why.
Because you're, well, it's, it's on the table, it's part of the decision-making process.
No, it's not.
You're trying to give that to the hospitals so you don't have to levy for it. But yet, we are going to have to take it out with the assumption that we're gonna lose money.
So they did a suggestion, like they have our role for us council members to transfer thirty thousand dollars, 21 to 21, to help you with that.
And that's gonna be part of it, but you're approving a resolution here, which I have no idea what the resolution says. You know, we don't have a copy of that.
It's online.
Maybe it's posted online, I apologize, I did not read that before, you know, in the past.
We're tran- we're motioning to adopt the resolution, transferring the administration of the Appleton Ambulance Service over to Appleton Area Health.
That's the, that's the resolution.
Yeah, it's entirely. Effective January 1st, and it's printed 2020, it was, it should be 2020. Sorry about that, guys.
This is Counselor Molden, um, can The, what happens if the hospital, or can the hospital refuse? What if the motion were to be voted on and passed, can the hospital refuse to accept?
No. The hospital is owned by its pretty
Okay.
Danny, uh
Go ahead.
Backtrack, we're all under the city umbrella.
Any other discussion or thoughts?
Warren, uh What's your thoughts? I mean, I'm also not opposed to having a joint meeting and asking us more of these questions, but in my heart of hearts, I think your management team has proven They're pretty damn good at what they've done, they've brought a lot less to you. I think this can be pulled out January 1st pretty well and save a lot of money for our taxpayer. So that, at the end of the day, I, I'd be okay with transferring Transferring some money to help with the losses of it. But if there's such huge tax implications and we can get it done January 1st. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, great.
Sure. And I think you guys have proven that the last two years that you can get a lot done, and we are five months out. We're talking about saving our taxpayer to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, Paul, we appreciate that comment, the difference with this, right now, is we're in the middle of a pandemic, and that's the, not even in the middle, we're in the third day of a pandemic is where we're at, and that is the thing That if we had all, none of that to worry about, yeah, I would say we do, yep, I think we could get that done. But I think that, what I would appreciate is that conversation around, because there were, you know, actually, um The ambulance, some of the ambulance members came to our board meeting yesterday, and like Jake said afterwards, he learned some things from them that we didn't know that would be helpful to us, so Maybe having that conversation and if we can all say, you know, if we all pitch together and we all work on this and hopefully, you know, if we need assistance from the council as well, maybe we can come to that conclusion. So if we could have that conversation and, and come to that place where we all feel like, you know, we'll, we'll shoot for this and we'll, we'll, you know, Go this route, but we're gonna need this, this, and this to happen, and I would like to, I know Jake said, well, you can iron those things out afterwards, but It doesn't feel good to iron things out afterwards because You know, it, it feels much better if there's some conversation and you've got a clear path and clear decisions about who's doing what, what's gonna happen, and oh, what's gonna happen, and I think For me, I would appreciate that, I'm pretty confident from what the ambulance was saying that they would probably appreciate that, and I'm not saying that maybe we have a conversation and then at that point we Either have really good reason why it can't happen or really good reason why it can't happen. But we aren't gonna know that until we all come together. There's just things we don't know about the ambulance.
Well, I mean, that's the same as a clinical member, I mean, I have no idea, I mean, there's no, really no explanation on things that were
Right.
And we're kind of all on the same boat, I understand that part of it.
I'm o- I'm okay meeting on Monday or Tuesday jointly with the hospital, the ambulance, and the city council, but I, I would have to hear, it cannot be done, it cannot be done. Jake physically can't get the billing figured out by January 1st, for me to say no, forget my first.
Is, is there, is there any reality thing, why couldn't the city office, why can't we help them with the billing until it gets? I mean, if there's an issue with the pandemic, I mean, with all the stuff, we're giving people for the pandemic, why wouldn't they let us help them do some bookwork to get the transition?
It's the payers, the, the insurance payers, you know, they just don't, you can't get them till they say, we give you the, that whole P to bill, that's just
This is Counselor Molden, I guess, um, I would just like to say again too, I agree with Andrew, I think we, it would be in the best interest of the members, the staff, the citizens To have a joint meeting just to have some discussion and to air things out prior to making some decisions, and again, that, that way it would be Concrete and, you know, in writing, as Mr. Moos said when he was, um, on branch lead.
But I, I, I'd want to meet next week and have that conversation, and then I'd want to vote on this because I don't want to take the camp as my I don't, I don't want to wait till the 3rd of August to vote on this, because I'll figure a lot of things.
I guess we should all be comfortable with knowing that not everybody is going to like the decision one way or the other.
Right, I do think, oh, that, you know, hearing people is important, and I think that it goes along with people, and now we Maybe we, you know, really care about feeling things, but feelings do matter for people, and I think that if our ambulance feels like they're being heard, that that's typical along with
It's not that I don't care about feelings, it's that decisions cannot be based solely on feelings.
Sorry, I missed, I, I missed that, yeah, so.
You know, when I was speaking with the ambulance administrators, it was, my understanding, they were speaking to the person who represents his body. Now I feel like maybe that's different. At any rate, I understand the, the decision to maybe you want to table it until you, you want to know more about it. But in terms of getting something in writing, what is it that you're looking to have in writing? Because this, this ordinance, excuse me, not one, this resolution, today or tomorrow, it's still gonna be true.
Yeah, that's, that's a valid point, it is.
That how, that how, right, what we can work out, it's like nothing to do with
I don't have anybody's doubt that there's a lot of questions to be answered. And I think the city, the hospital, and the ambulance can work together and solve those.
But I think it also requires some, you know, again, you know, saying we're gonna vote on this and then, so we, what if we come back and say, or we have a conversation, you know, Because we are taking on business that, this is money, I mean, we're all, nobody can deny that, this, this business is not made money for a very long time. So we're taking that on, like, and you're voting on this, and we say, well, you know, we're gonna need forty thousand to break even or Thirty thousand, whatever the number is. There's no assurance for us. So I think that for the council, that would be a good faith effort to have, have a meeting where we discuss this and we have some assurances about things, and the ambulance, I'm sure, has things that they would like Not, not saying they don't want to come under the hospital, but some assurance that we make them feel comfortable with this, where it's not feeling You know, like, you're not sure what's gonna happen, I mean, people like to apply and
So you feel comfortable with the, if, if, if we did something like that starting January 1st, I mean, if we, what would be the suggestion, transfer thirty thousand dollars to offset 2021 losses?
What I would feel comfortable with, that certainly would be something else, we, that's one of the things we asked for, was that back over to 2021 and, and some funds, so that we're not taking on a loss Immediately, and hopefully we can turn that around, of course. But I, I think, I don't know, maybe I'm not stating it clearly enough, but I think that, and this is my opinion, and I guess the council has to decide what's important there, but I think that There's some good opportunity to really build some relationships here and have some good faith between, um, the council and Willie and the ambulance and the hospital, and it's an opportunity that I think would be worthwhile to take to just Talk to each other and put aside some of these bad feelings and let's just get to work and figure out how to make this happen. And, and hear people's thoughts and opinions on it, and then we get it done and move forward, I mean, I think that's an opportunity, I guess you guys have to decide if you think that's an opportunity or not.
So my thought process is this is the first step to get that ball rolled. And then all those conversations happen, and the questions are figured out, and all these things. And I don't know if, if Jake tells you the billing can't be done, you know, January 1st, correct me if I'm wrong, but then we can say The transfer has to happen June 1st, 2021, and then you get the billing figured out.
You can amend the resolution, yes, of course you can.
Right, there's a lawyer right there, so for me, this, this gets that ball rolled. This gets all the questions, all the conversations going and figured out, and here's the goal, anyway, there's, been due.
And I think that, again, going back to that point of people wanting to be heard and just sometimes having a conversation, being able to Express some of the concerns or the worries or whatever that is, goes along with it, and that's, let me say that's my opinion about that, but Certainly, there's the concern that, that resolution goes forward and we come and say that, and it's like, well, you know, it's not gonna happen, you're gonna have to figure it out, and that is a concern that Would potentially need a conversation done. And I don't mean to sound hostile, but I mean, you worry, I think that is
Right, and if that's the fact, that's the fact. I never understand exactly.
But then, but then even having a conversation about this after you back then, you know, that is clearly important where you're gonna make it happen. Whether or not, you're just gonna have to get it done, I mean, that's the, that's
No, because we could amend this resolution and change the date that it can't be done.
And another question.
We could even amend the Or adopting this resolution right now to include the 300,000 dollars if you wanted to. Right, um, if you wanted to do that, you could do that as well, in the motion.
And I would be in favor of that as well.
Three things.
Well, three, there's gonna be, we have to say if we need to keep moving it, if it's, if it's not feasible, the pandemic takes off, and anybody here don't know, you're, you're not, I mean, I don't
Yes, you, you, you're asking, and you're looking for the favor. Adoption of the resolution, providing that X doesn't happen, or Y doesn't happen, yes, that can happen.
And the biggest hurdle for, for, is figuring out that, correct?
Billing, billing, staffing, yes. Uh, education.
But those things will be an issue, even if the ambulance, am I speaking too much into the microphone? Even if the ambulance were making millions of dollars, you're gonna have operational inconveniences in this kind of absorption.
Oh, absolutely, but that's where COVID and pandemic is the big issue, is that basically we're Running straight towards the potential
We're holding together, is what I really need you to understand. The city's in the middle of a pandemic with you, and the taxpayers are in the pandemic with you.
I understand that, Willie, but if, for example, our hospital or our care center or assisted living or our community gets hit hard with our elderly population that is so vulnerable, That has got to be our priority, I mean, we have to take care of these patients.
Right, at that, at that point, we'd have to make this a change.
Right.
We have, because if we have a large spike, and that's all hands on deck for COVID, then this isn't feasible. But we're what ifing on that right now, so then if that what if happened, we're gonna have to change it.
Right, but we don't want what if if they expense people's lives.
You don't know me, I'm neither of you, you know these people. So you have mistrust of me, fine, but you know these people. Trust them.
I mean, I know how important it is.
Well, my concern is
That's, that's where, I don't want that to get in the way of people's health and welfare either, you know, of their
My concern is here to be concerned with the ambulance and what it documented, and I mean, if it's that bad, is it gonna be able to stay afloat if we never move it over? I mean, this is getting to be a concern now from here, and it concerns everybody here. Maybe the ambulance will fall out if we don't move it.
I mean, I
I mean, it's, it's an honest question, it must think it was being said here.
Day and all here is over.
Exactly. So that's my concern besides the COVID that was taken on at the hospital, we didn't even figure out whether to keep the ambulance.
Laurie, just going back to the conversation, was it eighteen months ago? Was that when, was that last time? I know at that time you guys stated that you thought you could, you could make, turn it around and make some money with it. I mean, what's changed since then?
Yeah, well, for, first of all, part of that, um, process was that we wanted to, um Work off some of the dollars that we hold to the cities from that, the money that we borrowed back in 2017. Um, now, of course, that's paid out, so that, that isn't part of that piece, but the other thing is, is that, um, we had a lot better information this time when we did the analysis. The last time we had one page document, um, budget, and Jake can speak to that, and this time we had a lot, which, thank, thank you, Willie, for all that information. We were able to, and I think you saw in Jake's analysis, it was a deep dive, so we were able to really get a much better picture of what that was gonna look like. I'm not saying that, you know, we won't be able to get it to break even or maybe make a few thousand dollars, I'm not saying that, but where it currently sits, it's losing around thirty thousand dollars. So, um, as a business, for some of those business people, you know, aren't eager to take on a business, they know they're gonna lose money, you know, kind of like the Benson Clinic, you know, that, um It was a loser from the beginning, and, um, you just don't normally want to take that on. However, I would, I say that this service to the community, you can't even put a price tag on it, I mean, it's Very important to these people to volunteer and, and give their time, their weekends, you know, Just about everything they have for it is commendable, and it's very important, and we know that the ambulance service is a service, and that's what it is, it's not a moneymaker, you're not trying to make money Or can really make a lot of money on it, it's a service that's important to the community, so I don't want to diminish that or, or make it seem like it's all about money. But, um, you do, you certainly want to try to somehow, um You know, balance that as well with that. But I guess that's the best answer I have for that, is we have a lot better information this time around.
Well, I mean, that's for my, you know, it's tough for me not to want to vote for it just for the simple reason that we can save the city a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we have to give the ambulance seventy five thousand dollars, we're still making seventy five thousand dollars on the transfer.
That's right.
I mean, and that's the way I want to get it, if you need, I mean, even if you need a hundred, we still save fifty.
That's right.
I mean, that's the math you have to tie, have to do. You know, this for the community.
That's one thing we, you know, that hasn't come up yet either, we've got some major infrastructure projects just around the corner here, and this could make a difference On how much we need to bond for, and I don't think that's been brought up either, but that's another.
You know, because of that other thing with the, with the money that we got back from you from the sewer plant, that actually got us a good standing now with the bonding people, so now we stand a chance, so The project we're doing with our water plant right now, we couldn't get grants because of that, now we have that cleaned up, now we're possible, and now if we move something like this, it will off our ratings. So I mean, everything is, you get an infrastructure loan, I mean, it's not that we're trying to push something off that's losing money, it's trying to gather money from a different angle. I mean, for the taxpayers, so.
I understand.
I mean, you have to understand at our point, we're not going to let the hospital or the ambulance cost you a hundred, I mean, it's something to trade a transfer money and gain some back for our taxpayers.
See, if we pull out, I think, the thousand dollars from our general ledger, It would not even have that cost.
You see, if we pull out, I think, the thousand dollars from our general ledger, it would not even have that cost. Because it wasn't, wouldn't be certified in that tax law. But putting in one dollar in tax law, you think that's a transfer?
Yeah, I completely understand, though.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I know we wanted to get this over, too. I don't, I don't be comfortable with that, I mean, you actually can then vote into it, or, I mean, I don't, it's not, you, everybody have things to do to try to recast your money.
I don't know what the ambulance feels, but I mean, we would be, as you said, do something next week and have this conversation and keep voting it out. It is not our intention to carry this out either, because honestly, we've got a lot of work to do on spending time on a period or things, and that sort of.
I don't have a lot of questions on my end, but like, if we do do this, I want the ambulance to have what they need or their expectations are. So it is a one meeting, and it's like an hour or whatever it is, but it's not like, oh, we got to have another meeting next week. I'd like to have this some and stuff.
What I'm struggling with is why, why it's eight or eight, why we can't have that meeting next week approved. And like Willie stated, what's going to change? I'm not going to change my opinion. I, it needs to be done January first, if it's possible. If you tell me it's not possible in a week or a month, then we have to have that. So I would pretty much now proceed this go and have that meeting next week and then add an amendment to have thirty thousand dollars for transfer money. I would as well. Amber, what are your thoughts?
Well, I I still feel like we should have a joint discussion first and then make a decision. I, you know, these people have dedicated five, ten, fifteen, thirty years of service to our community, and if they're asking for time, I I feel obligated as a council member to hear them. Without putting a date on it, I'm not opposed to having a meeting next week. But I I do, I strongly feel obligated to hear not only just the ambulance members, but, you know, people from the hospital if they have questions, or people from the community. They they are our taxpayers, and I feel like they deserve that.
You're talking away until next week? I'm I'm comfortable, might as well spare your own actions and be done with it, and then we can start with a clean slate. That's what I want to do, everybody can air out their stuff, and then we go to the next meeting, it's done.
We're having a joint meeting, we're able to vote there.
How do we do that now, is in the hospital, we're all be there, and then we do the same thing, would they both open?
Okay.
The ambulance, where they at, open them to where they're not ordered, or they're just?
No, it's okay. The hospital, I'm gonna say the council.
I'm fine with that, I wouldn't ruin that meeting, but I, we better, it's, I would appreciate it if it was on your ballot, that meeting, everybody's concerns and move on from there.
Maybe submit some questions.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, I mean, just for, like me, I had no idea how the ambulance even functioned. So if we have questions, I mean, if you can direct them to the city office, it doesn't go in or whatever, we can actually get the answers, so we haven't had the meeting.
So you're saying one of those questions may be directed towards the hospital, you know, like, I can't remember who said, but not, the city's not going to have all of the answers. Maybe the hospital will, but I do agree that if there are questions that people have, we should put a deadline to submit them to one sole person, and they can distribute those questions to the appropriate person to try to at least attempt to get some answers.
So some of the the questions that we were able to kind of piece together was that there are some concerns about whether there's going to be additional training or any sort of additional licensing. The city cannot tell the hospital about how it's going to be administered, that's not their job. The hospital, they have a different procedure and different onboarding, that they want to train their new staff, that's their mandatory prerogative. We cannot control that. Now, like, a lot, the ambulance already has its license and ability to operate, that's also true. So I don't really foresee too much more state certification licensing to happen, but the hospital may want different procedures and just things of that nature. And the H R office may need, you know, make different requirements. For example, the city doesn't have a lot of paperwork for the ambulance members. The H R office may definitely want all of that from scratch. And, you know, seems like it's not a big deal, but it can take some some time to provide those kinds of things.
What's the earliest date we can have a meeting next week, Willie?
All right, I would have to check the calendar for it. Can I make a comment, please? Go ahead and sit real quick. In addition to questions that the council can give, there seems to be a lot of fear by ambulance people about this move. Why, I don't understand that, but why? So could the ambulance folks who feel that way, could they let the council know what the issues are? What is it that's fearful about it moving to the hospital? I have no idea, I haven't studied issues, but I think you ought to let them know that. Maybe, maybe you have, you have talked to some individuals, but I think, in addition to your, in addition to your questions, let them know what your fears are about this move.
We have them trying to ask them questions, it's going to be answers about these types of things.
We're ready to go on the board. I'm prepared to have a meeting next week, I don't want.
This is where my cap goes up. This is, well, we need a date, I want a date on this, because it's going to happen next week, and I want the date. Or, once soon as we agree.
Three days, and then Thursday, Friday, and Monday, it's gonna be fine.
About you guys out there.
Where is the meeting going to be at?
Here.
Okay, so are we supposed to be out and do the spacing?
Yes, they have fifteen people, so all the community members.
Is there nowhere else to hold it so more people are able to attend? Because obviously, there's people here that were.
Right, we we have restrictions.
But I'm saying is that they're not a bigger building that we could go to so we can have more people?
Not one that's accessible to all of our community members.
Well, then it's the issue with the taping up to.
Yeah, you gotta have all your.
You gotta have the tape on, you gotta help people be able to do the work. You have that going.
And they could all, like, show, like, on internet, too.
With our education around in there, or is it all the same?
Your, your subject capacity limitation is as well.
Right.
It's small.
It's probably us.
Do you really want us all in there in a pandemic in there, Bill? I mean, let's be honest, I don't think you do, but.
Well, we, actually, Jay, what we do is we screen everybody that comes in with a temperature and then put on a mask, so we're a very safe place to come to, yes.
That's right.
I just hear, but people can't even come see their loved ones right now in in care centers, so.
We can meet them all later, don't we, like? You have a question about care center, we can talk, Dick.
I I can't hear what some people are saying.
I was just telling Jay, if he has questions about our processes or procedures, we can certainly talk.
I'm not concerned if you guys aren't concerned.
Well, then, good, then we, we don't have to talk about it. So are you guys thinking of moving this, moving this, go down?
What what day are we moving to? Could you do this in just Monday? That's not, that's not correct.
We've got some stuff, Willie, already on our calendar next week, the beginning of the week, and then Wednesday, we've got a meeting here.
That's right, we have disinfection.
So Monday is a conflict?
Yes.
Yeah, we've got, we've got service master coming into the city building this Monday through Wednesday next week, if it's going to be at a city building, we need.
Oh, so that'd be a good reason to have it at the hospital, then?
We, I don't see why we could move it to fifty two wing. I don't know about the internet, because with the school, they do have internet, it's something we'd have to look into.
Something as strong as this, we don't know.
We'd have to check into that.
We need a calendar, sorry, guys.
The location can be determined at a later date or at a later time?
We'll do that, or we'll do most of it.
Well, on Tuesday?
Then on Tuesday?
They said, no, it's a Wednesday, building's being cleaned here. So we'd have to, for somebody to be able to.
We could do it one day and night.
I said, odds. Are you available one day or here, Dick, your meeting room?
What about the evening, one day and evening?
When you have one thing?
Two nights?
No, two mics only, I think, with the system, so you might have an issue with fifty two wing, too.
Oh, only two mics at the fifty wing?
We have constraints.
They can do it on Wednesday afternoon here, we could do that that evening if.
You want me to Wednesday afternoon?
Is there a way service master could leave this room till Wednesday?
No.
Okay.
They might be done by middle afternoon, so.
We can, they, we tell them to not hurry up, yeah.
Yeah, and and we can contact them and see if they can start Tuesday, you know, some of the buildings are taking a little less time, so it could be done Wednesday later afternoon, but I would have to let them know that they need to be done.
So maybe Wednesday at the same time.
Wednesday at?
What time are you thinking on Wednesday?
Wednesday same time.
Five thirty?
I personally prefer earlier, four o'clock or something, to be able to catch bedtime with my kids, read some books, but that's just me. If people could make four thirty work, that would be much nicer.
I can do four thirty, I can do four o'clock on Wednesday myself. Amber?
Um, no, I would have to do at least five.
Five is fine.
Five o'clock works, Amber?
Yeah, that should work.
Okay, let's do Monday at five.
Did you say Monday or Wednesday?
Wednesday at five.
Wednesday at five.
Oh, yes, Wednesday at five is fine.
Also, we need to hold on the motion on the table, we're going to need to hit that. Let me just get, we've got a lot.
Motion on the table?
Motion on the table.
Yeah, if you want a motion to table, what do you?
I make a motion to table, I mean, the transferring of the administration of the Appleton Ambulance Service over to the Appleton Area Health, effective, or, to Wednesday. The date would be the twenty second, Wednesday the twenty second at five o'clock.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in the second at the table, the transfer of Appleton Ambulance to the Appleton Area Health, till Wednesday, the twenty second at five o'clock. Can anybody have a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Guys?
Motion carries.
All right. So I'll leave this to Tori. Ms. Hammer, who has resigned, she said, "Problem is, with deep regret, I am announcing my resignation as a city council member of City Government. I have been honored to represent the City Government in this capacity, so please note that this is not an easy choice for me. I have had unexpected health issues, which require me to prioritize my work, school, family, and extra commitments, and therefore must submit my resignation. I would like to thank the city and community itself, and do not take my resignation lightly."
I'll move to the resolution twenty twenty dash twenty four to declare a vacancy on the city council. In a second.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in the second, for Tori's resignation, any discussion? So thank her for what she's done, and she did a good job, and she's very fun to work with.
We love you, Tori. Good luck, Tori.
Thank you, Tori.
So the next steps are, the law here says that the city council has to appoint somebody until a special election.
Excuse me, Willie?
Yes?
We didn't, we didn't vote on that.
No, they're, it's in the middle of the discussion. Please tell us what we need to do.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, so you you have the responsibility now to appoint somebody until the special election, which will be November. And the city council will vote on this person that you select. If there's a tie, then they're made of selects, choose in a tie right there. And notice that, and and when we publish it in the paper already, right?
Yep, that's right.
We have discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll motion the resolution twenty twenty dash twenty five approving second quarter gifts and donations.
I'll second.
Motion has been made in the second to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash twenty five, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Mr. Schlieber, are you with us still?
I am here, can you hear me?
Oh, faithful, hey, how are you?
All right, thank you, council staff. Just wanted to give everybody an update on the water treatment plant and new water treatment, or, excuse me, new water supply well. Hopefully, everybody got my council meeting outline that I provided to to city staff last week. Just wanted to come and give a status report. Basically, we've we've got the design for the new water treatment facility and new water supply well complete. The plans and specifications have been submitted to the Minnesota Department of Health and approved. And at this time, if the city wishes to do so, we can move ahead with advertising for construction bids for those improvements. I do have an estimated project schedule in the outline. If you do wish to move forward tonight with advertising for bids, we would go ahead and advertise for bids, and we would like to hold a, what's called a pre-bid meeting, which gives contractors a chance to come, attend a meeting where we talk about the project, we give them a chance to actually take a look at the existing site, the existing facility, answer any questions they may have. We would like to hold that meeting on July twenty ninth, is what we've got scheduled right now. And then we would like to receive bids at two P M on Thursday, August thirteenth. That would allow us to take a look at the bids, review the bids, and hopefully come back to the August nineteenth council meeting, and possibly award a construction contract if the city would like to move forward with construction. With, if that, if that does happen, construction would likely commence then in September or October of twenty twenty. And then we look, be looking at a substantial completion for the project late in twenty twenty one or early twenty twenty two. Right now, we're looking at January of twenty twenty two for substantial completion, and then we would have a startup process, which would go into, we're looking at probably July of twenty twenty two to finalize that project out. Any questions on anything?
Thank you, Bob.
No, no, thanks, I think we're moving forward.
If if the city does wish to move forward, I do include as part of your outline a resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids. Hopefully, everybody's got a copy of that and basically outlines.
Brian, you want?
Yeah, a quick question. Ryan Wadler from Appleton, just curious, how deep are the existing wells for the city? Anybody know that, Bob, or any?
Could you, could you repeat, could you repeat that question?
How deep are the existing well, or wells for the city now?
Oh, if I recall, I believe they're in excess of two hundred feet.
Okay, and of course, there's no way you know how deep the new one's going to be till you start digging that school.
Uh, the new one, we anticipate, we're actually going to install the new water supply well of approximately sixty feet from the city's existing water supply well that's located in the school property right now. Based on information from a hydrogeologist that we had involved in the design of that new well, we anticipate the the new water supply well to be approximately the same depth as the existing, which I believe again was around two hundred and eighty feet.
Two hundred and eighty or two hundred and eighty?
I believe it was around two hundred and eighty, I don't have that information in front of me right now.
Good enough, no, I didn't expect you to, thanks, I was just curious.
Yep.
I'll motion the resolution twenty twenty dash twenty six along for bids to be advertised for the water treatment product.
I second.
Motion has been made in the second for. Motion has been made in second for the project to move forward, the water treatment plant, any discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Couple comments.
No, we, we have a roadwork embarrassment to speak to.
We got some email issues, we tried to send something over, so I threw out some hard copies of that quick presentation. I'm on U G F, pretty good.
It's up there, yep.
Alright, Mayor, Council, thanks you for your, good time for having me come up tonight. Uh, we got some news, um, last week, I think it was middle of last week in Philly, night first base. Um, uh, we could talk about some improvements that MINDA is, has kind of given us the green light to either, to consider about, uh, moving forward with. Long one, the second slide here. Uh, so, as you recall, the city of Appleton Airport has a capital program through MINDA air networks. And what it does is it lays out all of the needs that the airport has, um, and on, on a yearly basis from fiscal or mon- monetary. Down to it, that helps MINDA organize and prioritize, allowing to assist, you know, our area airports um, with getting these projects updated. So, our C I P is reviewed and updated annually in the fall. Um, and then MINDA prioritizes from there, and the awards usually come through in the middle of summertime, um, for their next fiscal year. So, uh, at this time, MINDA has selected a couple of projects, um, for the city to consider if they want to move forward with, uh, trying to request for a state. The first one being an airport layout plan update, um, for eighty thousand dollars. And then, some paving improvements to the main apron, the runway turnarounds, and then the parking lot. Uh, that estimated cost is at six hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars. There is a local share, um, the state covers ninety-five percent of the costs, and the local, um, community pays for five percent. Kind of all the grants go forward as, um, kind of, kind of do the work, you kind of try to get the information, so these are estimated costs. Just kind of what you just did, you actually would go for the biz, receive all that information, so MINDA knows, um, exactly what, then a grant request would be, requesting to make sure it goes to the, their ramifications of the actual costs at that time. So, these are based on our C I P numbers at this time. So, that, the two, two of the proj, the two projects are separate in their entirety. Uh, so the first one is a airport layout plan, also referred to as the A L P. Essentially, what that is, is a comprehensive plan for the airport. Um, each airport is required to have one that, um, would like to receive state or federal funding. Designed to show existing conditions, near term, long term improvements. Like you say, it's kind of showing all this is what we have, this is what we'd like to do, the space that we have, the land we have. This is how we think we could best maximize our assets. It allows, um, showing that we are thinking about having a plan, when it's also listed in our C I P, when that comes up, they, MINDA can look at it and it's organized, um, helps them make in their decision-making process as well, so. Last time this A L P seemed to be updated was nineteen ninety-three, from what I find, anyway. Um, generally, these are looked at or recommended to be looked at at about every ten years. At least updated or renewed, um, and then sometimes sooner, if we know there's gonna be a major, um, development, we might come to this update. Kind of a background of what the A L P is. What the updates would include, uh, is kind of modernizing the one that is in place. Uh, obviously, there's things that are out there, uh, but we'd be updating with a new site survey, going through, um, and, and what, end up what happened, we get a whole new airport layout plan report, updated maps, drawings, uh, which would include, you know, the existing conditions, the existing forecast of what the airport sees as far as volume, try to forecast future use, those types of things, so. Um, that illustration there, like you say, we can kind of show, um, from the previous slide, you know, there's a lot of buildings out there that aren't shown on, you know, what's there today. So, we definitely want to update that to show, you know, some of the behavior, um, some of these other things that we want to get up to date, up to speed. So, we're, kind of, we're modern and we're moving forward from that step, so. This process generally takes, um, a bony year of level coordination with MINDA, um, working, obviously, with city staff and the airport folks. Um, so, what MINDA, when they do send out these notifications, August fifteenth is kind of our gold star, to try to give them just at least a letter and intent that we, at this time, intend to move forward with requesting a grant. If we decide to move forward, or council would wish to move forward with that, uh, this fall, we can kind of begin the process of that design, and then it takes about twelve months, so, you know, September, fall of next year, we'll be bringing back our report, um, with all the updates and presenting that to, to the council, uh, for their.
So, you create, you would help, this project is to help create a living document that will plan use for the future of this area.
And then, and, exactly, and it's updated, there, there is one, it's, it's just old and outdated, and so we really need it voted. We're starting from scratch, this number would be a lot larger, and, and a lot more involved, um, there's a lot more requirements as we move, but since there's a baseline for it, we're basically gonna take that, update it, and make sure all the, all of the forecasting, the air network analysis, is up to date, as well as, again, the existing, um, buildings and that sort of thing are out there, so.
So, that one off, uh, that one off there, that was the, kind of the D O T thing, it came out the first time, and somehow the ball got dropped, and I mean, he was kind of disappointed because we were like three or four years behind our wish list, so who was in charge of making that wish list? Is that us, is the city, or is that the engineer? So, I mean, he told me, when we do this, you pick what you want, and every year you add something to it, and then they look at you every year. And he said, "You keep adding," and we said, "Eventually, you'll have your road turned from the grid off to the highway." He said, "You just, you always have to keep adding to it, and then you get it back," so we need something to make sure they stay on top of that, uh, probably down the lead.
Well, generally, the city will work with the engineer to inform the pieces who want to submit to Minnesota Department of Transportation. And then, they have the task of saying what projects they want to accept into that C I P program. Is that correct? I've only been in this eight, nine months, so.
Yeah, correct. Essentially, um, yeah, so the, the administration has to channel through the city, um, they're the direct contact, so these notifications go directly to the city, um, and then, we work closely with them, keeping that C I P updated.
Okay.
So, we, this, uh, we, within last fall, um, September, October, we submitted the C I P to include, um, because we, because this actually was on there before, uh, I don't know if it had a different subject title to it, but we, it simply just wasn't selected. So, now we made sure we moved it like paving in this down to this fiscal year. Um, uh, for instance, next year, we got lighting upgrades, because that's another major thing. But, we also try to strategically place them on there at times, so that way, we make it attainable for MINDA to allow, you know, we're, we're selecting this project.
So, when you say strategy, you're saying you're paying attention to when it's a bonding year for legislature, and when it's not? So, you put the price here, I went to the bonding.
Right, and also the timing of certain projects, makes sense, the first, and we turn to this one second, sometimes those go over that, so.
Because I'm not sure, one year that I went out and met with him, and it must have been, not last year, but the previous year, he met with a gentleman that runs a spray company out of there, and they, there were three people there from the D O T, and they, they stated that they wanted to redo this tarmac area of the taxiway. But then, they said that they would actually tar him between his hangers, and then go past his hangers, or somewhere, and possibly back to his other hangers. You know, they could, they would do that also, you know, because it's his tax money, it's buying airplane fuel, it's bad for it. So, I mean, just so we keep him on our, our.
Yep, yep.
Well, he wanted.
Yep, absolutely.
And just so the city council knows when I did that, you know, there's a, a five percent that we have to pay. John actually said he'd sit down with us and actually help us pay part of that, so he couldn't get it done. I mean, he'd be willing to help us on that, so. I mean, him being willing to do that, I'd like to stay focused on helping him too, because he's a big part of our airport.
Yep.
And then the bigger project?
Hey, yeah, the only question's on the A L P. Um, the next, the next project is the paving improvements, and that's kind of what we were just touching on. And so, that's the main apron, um, going out to the runway, um, the, the link out to the west, or the northwest, I should say, around the hangers, and then the couple turnaround areas as well as the parking lot. So, again, this is areas that have been, MINDA goes through every couple of years or so often, and does a pavement analysis. The, the areas visually clearly have deteriorated or beyond, um, you know, any minimal maintenance. Um, so what we may, uh, doing here, the improvements would include of removing all of this, all of the two existing between us, and then placing new, new pavement back. In this timeline, would, uh, you know, for these improvements, the council wishes to notify, we could start this fall, um, with the design, getting the bids, and those types of things. Just giving the bidding environment of construction, I would, I would strongly recommend that we try and get the bids out, so we get our responses back this either late fall or early winter, uh, but then be a, a twenty twenty one, early summer paving, uh, for the actual construction. Uh, the end of the year, generally, for paving contractors, gets to be followed up with their, this current season, you know, weather and other things. But then, by September, October, they're trying to wrap up things that they've already had, so. I think as long as we get it out there, um, you know, for bid out, at least then they can have it on their schedule, so that right away next spring, we can be getting the paving.
Just as a little bit of information, we touched upon this before in the city council. The Minnesota Department of Transportation is already in the fiscal year twenty twenty one. The big constraint here is that it says the funds are available to execute the grant only during the state fiscal year twenty twenty one. So, in other words, hurry up.
And, and that, that kind of falls along with the C I P, generally, this is something that we will start working with. The main topic tonight is budget time, you know, as part of where this lands. And generally, that might, that might also make a decision on our C I P, if we move something to a later year based on what we know or we're forecasting for the city, you know, maybe that local share that we know is gonna be part of that, maybe that's not in the cards at that time, you know. But that's, that, the C I P would definitely play with, um, those decisions as well.
The local share for the bigger project is how much, thirty-four, one seventy-five?
Correct.
And for the other projects, or else than others, like it's the city council, it's upon you to actually know whether you want to be planning, or you want to do, um, infrastructure right now.
I think we should move forward with it, because we're, I mean, we fell behind the ball, this was supposed to be done in two thousand sixteen, so. Um, I think we should move forward, and it's a pretty good opportunity to get that much work done for five percent.
I agree.
Nothing to discuss, we're getting seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars in grants and paying thirty feet.
Oh, yeah.
Let's, let's go.
Yep.
Just want to give you a quick overview on what that project actually worth, but yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
I'll motion approve, uh, the city of New Street, or respond to MINDA accepting the grant for the airport paving project.
My second.
Motion has been made in second for the airport paving project, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
The next one I wanted to bring, just to formalize things, um, is for the city council to please vote on whether you want to continue with roadwork embarrassment for the engineering services and design for this particular project.
Motion that you tend to using engineering from roadwork and bearing to assist the city with the planning and designing requirements for the airport grants.
I'll second.
Motion has been made in second to keep roadwork and bearing, um, for the planning and designing of the airport grants, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you. You guys still wait? Come on, the party's just started.
Brian, I think you're up.
Oh, wow, my apologies, I think I was gonna be gonna start visiting tonight, uh, I would, uh, set it, my God. Um, I can hear, uh, I think you have the agenda, I don't know what it says, but it's the Appleton Police Department. It's reading with the policies, procedures for the police department. I certainly don't have to be complaining about the Appleton Police Department, because it's kind of sheriff's office. Probably, I don't know, but it's doing well, like, doing nothing but good things. Uh, but, I mean, you'd have to really be hiding under a deep rock to not understand there's a hell of a lot of controversy in society with some pretty unnecessary death and some, some police. And that's, of course, what made me start thinking about this, and then I'm a trial lawyer who has sued a lot of people over forty years, a lot of organizations. And one of the first things you do when you're gonna sue an organization or individuals or a city, uh, is you look at the rules that's supposed to follow, and the procedures that they've done. And sometimes, they're only half rule procedures, that's even better, that's even better than those. Alright, so you all have procedures, okay? Um, so I took a look at them, and why I'm here, you know, the old hours, uh, distinction time saves nothing. Uh, ounce of prevention, better than a pound of cure. Uh, we sure as heck don't want our A's and road controversy or our city, uh, if possible. And so, uh, I'm just coming from the perspective of a trial lawyer or local citizen who has seen lawsuits, who has done lawsuits. Um, and that isn't even the main focus. All too often, I've heard discussions, and people will often go to, "Oh, there, we better do this, because it'll get sued if we don't." No, the main focus is, we don't want people necessarily dying. We don't want our cops under lawsuit and that kind of string of stress, okay? So, that's why I'm here. So, uh, Willie kindly sent me the Appleton Police Department, uh, procedure manual. John Holt cooperated quickly, couldn't, couldn't make it to the meeting, showed most on the line, but he sent it to the county policies. I went down out to the Minneapolis Police Policies. Lo and behold, there's brand change on it. No chokeholds, chokeholds are expressly banned now, they were not prior to that ugly incident we all know about, okay? So, that's one item, so what I'm gonna propose, what I'm gonna ask you to do, and you don't have to do it tonight, and the police department maybe wants to weigh in on this too, uh, and who knows, maybe I'm wrong about these procedures. But as far as when, when I tried to fly spec then, over the last couple of days, here's what I discovered that I think we could improve on for the police department. One, uh, expressly ban chokeholds, okay? Now, the police will explain to you that just having an arm around the neck doesn't necessarily mean chokehold. I mean, there's, there's very different procedures. Uh, respiratory restraint, chokehold, choke people can kill people, okay? Whereas a corral maneuver, which the policy does recognize is different, it puts them to sleep by pressing them corral. Okay, but, uh, and for instance, Sheriff Holtz mentioned to me in his email that they don't train chokeholds and they don't do chokeholds. But what I want to talk, tell John, is that his policy does not expressly prohibit the chokeholds, okay? So, I think that'd be good to have that expressly in John's policy, and I'd like to see it in Appleton's policy too, okay? Because Appleton's policy doesn't have it. Uh, that, or, uh, Minneapolis. Number two, uh, there's nothing in the policy about a duty to intercede. Okay, one of the things when we all watched the George Floyd nightmare on those videotapes, is, I mean, maybe you're different than me, but part of me was going, "Jesus, somebody talk to this guy, hey." I mean, one officer reportedly said, "Shouldn't we turn them on outside?" I mean, there is an express duty to intercede in the Swift County Sheriff's Department policy. There is one in Minneapolis, uh, Police Department policy. I didn't see one of them, okay? No. My wife told, you're all are trained to intercede, that you're told and trained to do that when ugly thing, illegal things are happening. But I think it'd be good to have it right in our policy, okay? So, neither city don't get accused of, hey, what do you have to do later on. Uh, number three, uh, on fleet, uh, many of us have seen that ugly scene that happened in Florida of driving in Burger King or something, where, uh, the suspect who was probably drunk, uh, fought and then ran away and was shot, you know, while he's running away. Um, you know, what are the guidelines for shooting someone when they're fleeing, okay? Now, there isn't an express thing about that. They don't try to make detailed rules, probably for a reason, because every darn situation is different, okay? Is the guy running got a gun in his hand? Is the guy running maybe got a gun or look like? I mean, a cop has to make split decisions, so you can't second guess, uh, with hindsight. But, uh, Swift. But Swift County Department of Policy, for instance, says when a person is fleeing and you're going to use deadly force, you try to get a warning. Now, can you always do that under the circumstances? No. But I think it would be worth it for us to have that also in our policy, the Appleton Police Department policy. The last number four thing that I'd like to see is something that, that is, is technically, I mean, really doesn't have to be interwritten policy, but it's not a bad idea to have it in. And that's this. You remember, we have all seen this video of the George Floyd horror show. But just today on the Minneapolis trip, it came out, the story, they released the body camera. Maybe some of you have to do some of that. But it shows, I think it's Blomis, the one officer's name, his body camera. And he was the first one to come up to George Floyd in his car. And according to his body camera, he just came up to him and told him to get out and start hollering and swearing at him. And then eventually pulled the gun on him, hollering and swearing to get out. George Floyd turned up the body camera, he's just going, flop, 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 flop. And puts his arm up like this, well then he opens the door, he puts his gun back and drags him out. One of the things that's stated in, and I don't know if this was part of our policy, Willie, it was an attachment that talked about anti-racial bias, okay? So that's a, yeah, it doesn't say Appleton Police Department on the top, but in there interestingly said, whatever feasible, I think is the language, you know, tell the person your costume why you're there. You know, somebody's accusing you of doing a twenty dollar counterfeit bill. I need to talk to you, sir, right now. Please get out. No, that wasn't said. Get the fuck out of the car. Now, get out, get out, get out of the car. How would you, any of us, if somebody screamed out and somebody comes up to our man? Pretty damn scared and like, listen, we're American citizens. We have the right to know. When one of our public servants accosts and starts ordering us around. If we have, they have a couple of costs for our crime, good suspicion, yes, against our ordering us around. But, I mean, we have the right to be told why in the hell we're being accosted by an officer in the state. So it's, it's number four item, but I think would not be bad to have in our procedures. When feasible, any suspect or citizen should be told why we, why we are being accosted, why they're being questioned. So those are the four items. Like I said, I'm just bringing this on police force and everything. I'm expecting to do a resolution about them tonight. You're going to want to hear from them. I'd be happy to talk to them further and, you know, I tried to fly spec the policy. You're medium missing something or something. That's, that's what I'm about.
Thank you.
If I can answer any questions too, or the gentleman in the department want to get any questions, now I'm happy to have them.
I have no comments on the policies.
Any other public comments or moving on? Want to move into business? We take like a one-minute break. She's been here all afternoon, but it's right in here. All right, you're ready. You have one question?
Yep. These boards are.
Are you back, Amber?
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay.
We're on the Sportsman's Club.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion approved without delay the Appleton Sportsman's Club to host the raffle November twentieth, twenty twenty pursuant to the application guidelines of the Minnesota Gambling Control Board as presented by Minnesota Statute three forty-nine dot one sixty-six. Motion has been made for the Sportsman's Club. Wait a second.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded in discussion. Karen Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The motion carries.
Okay, regarding our real update, I am going to be in the next two weeks amping up demolitions. I'm going to put together some scopes for these buildings to be knocked out. I have to go down with a hammer and start doing myself. You pack it, you will see demolition, permanent document. We are good until the end of this year and we're going to get an extension until July twenty twenty-one. So we'll be able to do these projects. Also attached is documents from the county. The government is going to be available. Is about twenty-two thousand five hundred, excuse me, thirty-two thousand five hundred. Of course, you can only use that in the manner that they describe, which is seven thousand five hundred for bigger buildings, the commercial ones, and two thousand five hundred for residential facilities.
Things are working better than, keep it moving forward.
Yeah. It's important. I could be off in the first city ten years.
Well, I said, I think it was mentioned there that we thought it'd be in the best interest of our community if we started cleaning up the main drag and a block each way off. You know, so we didn't travel through our community. So I mean, that's, that's going to be our main focus to start with.
Now we have the highway right here.
Yeah, that's, that is.
Oh, it's like the whole.
Yeah, we have been a block each way.
That will include the street.
Yep, yep, yep.
Not from New York, that's not a highway.
Oh, I'll do that at the end with the wrong figures. Emily, you want to talk about the video register? You still do that?
Hi, Council. Basically, one of the firmings tonight is the deputy registrar office has to have an appointee. And that person is the person responsible for making sure all the other employees that do the motor vehicle function and the driver management function are following all the confidentiality, all the rules and stuff like that. Our corporate clerk was the designated person. We just need to update our contract with the motor vehicle, Department of Health and Safety Motor Vehicle Office. And that would give, the new appointee would be the person that would be responsible for contacting them when there was a new employee and making sure everyone had access. Or someone that was expired, that person would be responsible. So that's the contract that I've been trying to do with something that I get signed every so often as well. So we have shared a perfect spot to designate a new deputy registrar and sign a new contract with the state. And then that needs to be signed by the end of the month.
Thank you, I agree.
Motion to approve the appointment of City Clerk's Chair and Deputy Regist. I'll second. Motion has been made and seconded for Emma to be the deputy registrar. Any discussion? Karen Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
This, this next one is about that issue that we mentioned regarding the premium payments. The use of this language, though being subtle, helps us get around a very big issue. So I recommend how the city council consider amending the language as it's written here.
So that's setting the action on the national authority.
Right.
I'll motion to approve. I'll motion to approve the amending, amending the language of Article Five of the Non-Union Personnel Contract.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to amend the language in Article Five. Any discussion? Karen Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
This next one's kind of full. It's further a little drive-through restaurant there on Main Street. We have the opportunity to acquire this. It's been fully tax-forificed previously. As you will take your list and apply it to the county, it was in the taking process, it has been taken. So we have the ability to acquire it. It should be almost close to free. And so with your permission, I'd like to ask the board commissioners to start processing this in the city of Appleton.
Absolutely. With intent, we're going to try to resell it at a low price to add another business in it, you know. We don't fire it. Great. Yeah, excellent. Another business is exactly what I think all of us are hoping for. A motion to allow that the city administrator take necessary steps to acquire the person number two-two-dash-zero-nine-two-one-dash-triple-zero.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Emily. Motion has been made and seconded to let the city administrator move necessary steps according to the verse. Any discussion? Karen Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
MediaCom. It's time to sign the franchise agreement. Ask permission to be assigned, obviously.
We've already talked about it. MediaCom has been recent months now, they're not creating part of the management team.
No, I mean, there is a very big discussion and expertise that I possess about broadband versus being a franchise community. And that is a long-term thing. You guys are interested at the city council to learn more about home broadband at this point? Just let me know. I'll put together something with Christie from the RNC. Because there are options, whether he's licensed and we could go together with him for that next year.
One year?
I think it's actually two years, if I'm mistaken.
And our options are fairly limited, right, John? Is that, is that correct or completely limited in a sense?
Well, that's kind of like, you know, when you're in economics, they teach you that monopolies are inefficient. However, when it comes to certain services, you know, media com, Time Warner, all the cable providers, are they're all a little monopoly. Doesn't make us comfortable, but the residency will favor this. I'm right through the last terms here.
Our very wise attorney is pointing to this franchise showing for a term of ten years.
Ten years, sorry. I read wrong, we love the zero.
So what does that do to us for possible broadband and grant dollars from state and federal as we sign a ten-year agreement?
You can't start looking until then.
You can't start looking for the ten years?
Until then. And the way that it works in this state, I've only been here nine months, it goes to the Department of Economic Development and Employment D. E. And there is a process to it. It's not, it's not an easy process.
When does the media com contract get decided by?
I don't know. Generally by this time, you guys have had a signability.
We're going to do it every ten years, so this time, ten years ago.
Is that a long-term contract?
That's what I'm thinking. Everyone, what I know about broadband, we have a rate of it and they can't get enough grant dollars to get into the city. And if something were to change due to a signed a ten-year contract, that would be unfortunate because.
I can't, it's a lot faster, correct, right?
It is. Not that technically, but it is expensive.
So when, when you're a city that has a lot of other projects, you just gotta, if you want, if you want to deploy me to start working on broadband, I would happily do it. But you have a ten-year horizon for your projects as they are now.
Yep.
I can do whatever you want with you, but I have to stay.
Okay, I mean, can you ask him for a five or whatever?
I could. You could table this and I can ask him.
I say ask. I would, I would like that too because I bet if you pulled the community, everyone would be highly in favor of broadband if we could get it. Including.
Nine dollars, is that, is that? That's.
Tell me that, I mean, that's a C.
Yeah, I don't, I can ask him.
Man, ten years, that's a long time.
It is.
I'm your retirement age. Well, I guess I'd like more information on this because one year versus ten years, ten years is a, it's a big amount. And so I would like you to do a little deeper.
Okay.
City of Cincinnati, I don't know, but we have a ton of broadband for, like, three years ago now.
Well, if you're a block holder at Appleton, you can have broadband because if you didn't pay a lot of support, you know, just monthly, so.
But if you're not, I'm going for neighbors, but it costs ten, three thousand dollars to call in and open his house.
Because he didn't do it.
Just didn't do it responsibly.
Right, so I don't want to miss that.
They're not going to say, hey, we're going to say no to you because you didn't sign today. They want us.
Right.
So if you're saying, hey, we'll go find out some more stuff, we'll go find out some stuff.
I'd say that a little bit.
So table, want to like that interpretation?
No. We got a hold of that on the table or?
No, we didn't.
Too many of the motions. Emma? We didn't motion that yet.
No, there was no motion made yet.
So we can just go forward.
So again, the library has different set of hours than we do. And we have a really nice prepared plan, but they need a couple of adjustments. And this is what I allowed her to do until we went to today so that you can make part of the plan. So essentially this allows them to maintain social distancing using deliverables that they're using our curbside deliverables and other things. And they also use masking there during the times when they are in operation.
And city is on board with this plan obviously?
Yes, this is city's request.
Well, this is city's plan to.
No, it's my plan.
Well, your request.
You like turning it into a plan.
Yeah. A motion approved by the city over nineteen previous plan to include library considerations as presented by staff.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the city's over nineteen previous plan. Any discussion? Karen Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
You guys have the transactions. We've had a very long night, so itemized anything here, but there is nothing above the purchase policy. Everything is within normal purchase policies. We have under-stick general fund balance of two point one to two zero zero, two point one five. Under-stick and under-stick with fund balance of one zero one seventy, one hundred and two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Or total balance, three million, one hundred ninety-two dollars, one hundred fifty-four, ninety-two cents. We're in a fairly stable position. If you have any questions about these, do not hesitate to speak with me about it, but you can keep this and digest it, which segues into COVID. So there is this funding that's available, so the CARES Act has allocated money to cities, to states to deploy to cities and counties, et cetera. We have an appropriation, an amount of one hundred and two thousand dollars, of which we could only use in one particular way at this point, which is for disinfecting that we do right now. I submitted an application for three months for twenty-seven-five percent of it. Twenty-five percent is for us to pay. We can use those funds for that portion. But in terms of what else we can use it for, it's very limited. And speaking of the human so cities and Governor Walz, he was on that meeting that I remember. They're not moving to cover revenue losses. They're moving to cover whatever you spent to prevent COVID or to improve protection against COVID, but not revenue losses. So for example, if next year we have one hundred and fifty thousand dollars less of tax returns because of this COVID impact, they're not compensating you for that. So this is why it's wise to try to level fund this year as much as possible and try to get things off the limit as much as possible. And that's, that's what we're all struggling within our values. But we'll get there, you know. I want to communicate hope to you guys. Everything that's happened here today is what's supposed to happen. And so that, that's where we stand with the COVID funding. The CARES Act has been fantastic for our hospital and given them a lot of leeway. As a city, we don't need that leeway, we don't have that level of funding. So, you know, thank you for the government. They have a whole different set of ball games there than why they don't want to transfer them to the direct to the city. It has to do with open them, it has to do with taxes, it has to do with a lot of things. We just don't have the time to get them to it. So right now, what we have is a hundred and two thousand dollars, of which you can only access, and you've got the standard thirty-eight, fifteen thousand dollars. But it's there. Oh, and I wanted to say thank you to Pioneerland Library Services. They were, they anticipated this, and so they've asked the same amount of money from us of last year. They usually go up a little bit, they said no. I, I spoke with them, I said, thank you very much, because we were going to ask you. So, wherever we can get help, we're appreciated, thank you.
I don't know, if I make this Amber's turn? Amber, you're up.
I'm here. I'll make a motion to adjourn, uh, Wednesday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty, regular council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded, dismiss the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed, thanks everybody.